Thank all of you for being here. My name is Michael Coker. I'm the representative for District Two. I mean, history is being made tonight, right? I mean, this is the first meeting of the newest city in Georgia. And so, I expressly want to thank you for being here, being part of this history. We have some different agenda items to take care of tonight. So, we're going to talk a little bit about that in just a little bit. This is a special called meeting. And just so you understand the difference, so when you have a city council, there is three types of meetings. There's emergency meetings, there's special called meetings, and then there's regular meetings. So, just so you understand, you have to have a special called meeting to set your regular meeting agenda. So, that's going to be one of the primary purposes of the reason that we're here tonight, okay? So, we are going to, we have a lot of items to address. I appreciate your patience. We put copies of the agenda, courtesy copies, on each table for you to feel free to follow along. And so, I am going to turn it over to start to Councilperson Rudnick, who is going to call the roll. Present.
Tim Sullivan?
Present.
Present.
And Michael Rudnick's present.
Mr. Sullivan, could you stay, make sure we can hear you?
Yes, I'm talking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear my microphone? Tim, can you hear this microphone?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, present for you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a quorum. The City of Mulberry Charter allows us to operate if we have a quorum of the members here present. And so, now, I'm going to turn it over to Councilperson Shields, who is going to go over the agenda and for the approval.
All right, for the agenda, as you can see there, we're going to have a motion to accept the agenda. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Yes, and I'll make the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, so, the agenda's been accepted. That's on the table. That is the agenda that was provided to the legal organ for Gwinnett County, and it is the agenda for this evening. It's really important to the council members that we start with two items. The first is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance, and the second is going to be a prayer.
Michael, can I ask one quick question? Sorry, to go back to the agenda portion, I apologize.
Sure, no problem.
We didn't have public comment on the agenda, and I didn't know if that's something that we can add on, if there's anybody that wanted to speak. I know this is a special call meeting. Maybe it's a better question for Mr. Riley, the acting city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Riley, if you could maybe advise, is there going to be public comment at this meeting?
On a specially called meeting, you have to stick just to what's on the agenda. And as much as it wasn't on the agenda, you cannot have, you cannot add, you cannot take some things that are on the agenda, but you cannot add anything to the agenda on a specially called meeting. If you're going to have the regular meetings, if you all desire to have whoever's believed the right first regular meeting, create that for the agenda, we certainly would put that out.
Okay. All right, so, we can put it on for regular call meetings moving forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So, for those of you that don't know, that is Mr. Bill Riley. He is an attorney that was advising the transition team. He's been helping us too through the transition, just to introduce him. Back to what I was saying, so, the two things that we'd like to get started with are the Pledge of Allegiance. We, I have asked Mr. Brian Lappert to lead us in the pledge. Now, Mr. Lappert is a resident of the city of Mulberry. He's also a combat veteran with the 33rd Tactical Fighter Wing during Operation Desert Storm and Desert Shield. Mr. Lappert was a sergeant in the Air Force at the time that he left his service, and he served as an Integrated Avionautic Systems Specialist on the F-15C Eagle fighter jet. So, if you can, if you're able, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and join me in thanking Mr. Lappert for his service.
Please remove your cover. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, indivisible and just as one. Thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to invite Pastor Diane Ward. So, Pastor Diane is one of the pastors here at Hamilton Mill United Methodist Church, who has very kindly allowed us to use their space and to allow us to conduct their meeting here. And so, I personally, and I know the other council members, have a lot of appreciation and thanks for the church for allowing us to use it. So, she's going to lead us in a short devotional and a quick prayer, just to bless our night tonight.
Good evening. A couple hospitality things. If you go out these doors to the left, those are the restrooms. And then, you might have noticed when you came in, we've got extra turkeys in the North Ex. Don't mind those. Tomorrow is our Friendsgiving with our preschool, and so, there'll be a couple hundred people in here tomorrow. So, thanks for being flexible and sitting with the tables, as we will be eating in 24 hours in here. So, when I pray at things like this, at city events, I usually like to read from a devotional book by Howard Thurman. Thurman was a spiritual advisor to Martin Luther King Jr., and I find that his work is very interfaith friendly for those, since this is not an official church event, so for those who are attending who may not be churchy people. So, today, I will read from his devotion, "I seek room for peace." I invite you to take a posture of prayer that may be comfortable for you. "I seek the enlargement of my heart, that there may be room for peace. Already, there is room enough for chaos. There is an everyday's experience, much that begs for confusion and bewilderment. Often, I do not understand quite how my relations with others become frayed and chaotic. Sometimes, this chaos is a positive thing. It means that something new, creative, and whole is beginning to pull together the tattered fragments of my relationship with a person, and to fashion it into that which delights the spirit and makes glad the heart. Sometimes, the chaos is negative, a sign of degeneration in a relationship once meaningful and good. There is room enough for chaos. But the need of my heart is the room for peace. Peace of mind that inspires singleness of purpose. Peace of heart that quiets all fears and uproots all panic. Peace of spirit that filters through all confusions and robs them of their power. These I see now. I know that here in the quietness, my life can be infused with peace. Therefore, before God, I seek the enlargement of my heart at this moment, that there may be room for peace." Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ward. Our next item up on the agenda is to elect a chairperson to conduct tonight's meetings. And after the chairperson's elected, that chairperson's going to make some comments about the future of this organization, this body, and the leadership, and how we are going to proceed moving forward. So, before we get there, I will go ahead and take nominations for the chairperson to lead tonight's meeting.
I'd like to nominate Michael Coker to be the chairperson to lead tonight's meeting.
Does that second that motion?
All right, any discussion on the item? All right, at this time, we'll call a vote. If you could raise your right hand, all in favor of Michael Coker as the chairperson? All opposed? Well, I got one, I think, that half opposed, half didn't on the screen. But I think, so then, as a rule of order, then I will conduct this meeting as chairperson moving forward. And just, so, before we move on, I wanted to address a couple things, because obviously, this body, we represent you, right? The people of the city of Mulberry. And so, we're very attuned to what you say. We want to talk to you. We want to hear what your concerns are. And we've heard the concerns about the, this meeting, and the fact that there is not a representative yet for, that's been elected for District Five. For those of you that don't know, District Five is currently in a runoff, okay? That runoff is set to be held on December the 3rd, and that runoff will likely not be certified until a week after that election. So, that puts us with the holidays just before Christmas and just before the New Year. Well, we as a body, when we called this meeting, ideally, we would want to wait for that individual for District Five. But the reality is, is there are items that we need to deal with right now. The first being, we've received word from Gwinnett County, the attorney for Gwinnett County, that we, as the newly-elected council, have recently, or will be substituted into the lawsuit as soon as this week. They do, we talked with the attorney for Gwinnett. They have informed us that the transition team, since they now cease to exist, are going to be dismissed, and then this council will be named individually. So, each of us, as representatives, will now be defendants in a lawsuit by Gwinnett County. We unfortunately cannot wait until mid-December to work with legal counsel, to hire legal counsel, and to be prepared as defendants in that lawsuit. And so, that is the primary reason why this meeting was called. You'll see on your agenda, one of the items that is on that agenda is an executive session. What an executive session is, for those of you who have never done, have never been to a city council meeting, is that during that executive session, we will retreat to a private room, and in that time period, we plan on discussing the litigation with the lawyers. And that is something, like I said, we have to do. As you may also be aware, there is a court hearing that has been set for December the 4th in Fulton County. So, in the Fulton County case on December the 4th, that will be a hearing in one of the Gwinnett County lawsuit cases. So, that's the number-one reason, right? Why we felt like, unfortunately, even though we wanted to wait for the District Five representative, we felt we needed to go ahead and conduct this meeting. The second reason is, is that there are services for the city that plan to start on January 1st, 2025. So, if we were to wait, again, to mid-December, to go ahead and hold our first meeting, to then, then you would have the Christmas holiday, you would have New Years, there is not enough time for us to have some or all of those services set up and ready to begin on January 1. Perfectly good example, one of the things that's current, we're currently being worked on is the RFPs, or the Proposals for Banking. So, if we are going to take over services, we need to be able to have a bank account and take deposits or checks beginning on January 1. So, these, among others, are the reasons for calling this meeting. And so, I just wanted to address that and make sure everybody understood the purpose and the reason why we called this meeting. It was not, it's not to disenfranchise District Five or the residents of District Five. We look forward to our District Five representative joining us. And the last issue that we've heard is, obviously, you might have seen some stuff about, one of the things that this body is responsible to do is to elect a mayor from among our ranks. So, the city council is to elect a mayor. So, what we've decided to do, to keep everyone up to date, is you heard us elect a chairperson tonight. That's just for this particular meeting. We'll conduct business. At our first regular meeting, which I talked about at the beginning, we will provide dates for those regular meeting schedules. We will select an interim mayor and an interim mayor pro tem, right? We've all agreed to that. And so, what is going to happen is, we're going to go ahead and select an interim mayor and an interim, basically, an assistant mayor to conduct business, because we need the mayor to sign contracts, right? Think of a bank. When you open a bank account, somebody's got to sign those banking documents, and so, that has to be the mayor. So, we're going to elect an interim mayor, and then, once the District Five representative is sat, we will scrap that interim mayor and interim mayor pro tem, and we will hold a new election for the mayor and the mayor pro tem, so that the District Five citizens and representative can feel like they were included in that decision. And that mayor and interim, that mayor and mayor pro tem will be the first acting mayor of Mulberry, okay? So, moving on to kind of our next thing to talk about, our next item of business, we are going to go ahead and start some remarks from the council member. So, I thought it was important for us to go ahead and, if we could go ahead and, if you to hear from the council members, who they are, why they chose to serve. We're going to go in order of districts. So, we've got Mr. Tim Sullivan in District One. I'm going to let him go first to introduce himself to you.
Hey, good evening, people. I'm Tim Sullivan. For those of you that don't know me, I represent District One. And my words are short. I'd like to express my gratitude to the folks that got us here, Specialty Leader Ephestrahn and Senator Dixon, along with the citizens of Mulberry that voted for this city. I'd like to also thank the transition team, which has done a tremendous amount of work that you will learn more about as time goes forward, but they've done a tremendous lot of footwork to help us get up and going, and I appreciate their efforts. Basically, my reason for running was just to preserve the community that we have. I've been a part of it for over 30 years. Don't like the direction it's turned, like to stem that, so, that's what I've got to say.
Okay, thank you, Councilperson Sullivan. Next up is District Two, which is me. I'm Michael Coker. A little bit about me, so, I moved into the city of Mulberry when I was eight years old, okay? So, I've lived here pretty much my whole life, seen a lot of changes. I know, I remember when I first moved here with my sister, brother, and my parents, we had to drive all the way to Buford, was the nearest grocery store. So, you can imagine, things have changed quite a bit since I've been here. I am an attorney. I practice law in Lawrenceville, and I now live with my wife and my three children here in Mulberry. I also want to echo what Mr. Sullivan said in District One. We would not be here without two of the gentlemen especially that are sitting right here and one more. I want to personally thank Leader Ephestrahn, Senator Dixon, and Representative McCollum, who are here with us tonight. Thank you for coming. These men passed legislation to make Mulberry happen. It was not an easy feat. I think they worked very hard on this, and I think the people of this city will always be appreciative. So, thank you, gentlemen. The next thing I want to thank is the transition team. I don't think that sometimes even myself, as a member of the public, realize the amount of time and effort that goes into starting a city. That you don't just wave a magic wand and all of a sudden, you know, services start happening. And these legislators, which I already referenced, as well as Mr. Chuck Warbington, as well as Mr. Jerry Haynes, they worked many long hours. They reviewed documents probably a foot and a half or two feet high in preparation for the members of this council. And so, those many hours that they spent, I personally want to thank them for that. But more than anything, I want to thank the citizens of Mulberry through the referendum, through, for electing me for District Two. I look forward to representing you and representing this city and serving the community that I love, okay? All right, next up, we have from District Three is Councilperson Shields.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kyle Shields, District Three. Thank you so much for showing up, taking time out of your busy day to show up for this. It means a lot to us. I've been in Mulberry, the city of Mulberry, for 18 years, actually, over in Hamilton Mill. Been in that house the whole time. My wife is a teacher over at Puckets Mill Elementary School in fifth grade. She's been there since the school has opened, and both my boys have gone through the school system here with Gwinnett County, and they're now graduating, so it gives me a little bit of free time. I really do want to help this community be the best that it can be. I am here just to kind of listen to everybody, be the mouthpiece, and I want to get as many ideas from all the people of District Three and also the city of Mulberry. And what I'm going to do at the next meeting is, I will have a book out at the next meeting, because I would like to get people's names and their phone numbers and emails, because I feel that anybody that wants to step up and volunteer should be heard and should be able to help out. We could have committees in District Three. We can find something for you to do, to really kind of get you engaged, and I feel that that would make a strong district for us here in Hamilton Mill. So, please, feel free to come up and contact me at any time. I'm here for you. Thank you so much.
All right, next, from District Four, we have Councilperson Rudnick.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Michael Rudnick, Councilman over District Four, which is this side of Hamilton Mill up to 124 and going out towards the Auburn border. I'm so much appreciative of everyone that came out to vote on November the 5th, for everybody in all the races. It's our civic duty to do so, and it's our privilege to do so. So, thank you for getting out and voting, not only for me, but for all the candidates that ran. I want to thank Leader Ephestrahn, Senator Dixon, and Mr. McCollum, Representative McCollum, for getting this legislation to, through the state senate and house, for making this city for us, because that was step one for us to have this city, was to get the legislation passed. And we've been through a lot of steps, and we're at one of the final steps of implementation at this point. This is some of the harder portions, but we've got some great people on board that are willing to help out. And I'll echo what Councilman Shields said, that we're going to need assistance from all the residents, and if you want to help, we'll find a spot for you. I'd also like to thank the transition team, along with those three members, Jerry Haynes and Chuck Warbington, for assisting with what Councilman Coker said. The amount of time and effort they've put into preparing us with meetings and having transition meetings with the public has been tremendous. So, that's been a big, big asset to get us off to a running start. So, thank you very much to you all. And the last thing I'll say is, I look forward to working with every citizen that wants to assist. I actually work for the city of Lawrenceville as my full-time job. I'm the fleet director there, so I will tell you that government is not that exciting. Most of it is pretty boring and mundane, and if it is exciting, then we're doing something wrong. So, hopefully, we keep it boring and we move forward and do the right things for the city of Mulberry. So, if you ever need anything, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to give you my cellphone number. Fortunately, we all live very close by, so we're just a stone's throw from anywhere in Mulberry. So, if you need anything, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Rudnick. There's one other person that I'd be remiss not to thank. So, sitting down here is Ms. Chandler Faith Pitt. So, she has graciously agreed, volunteered to be our secretary. So, she is down here. She is taking down everything, taking our minutes for tonight's evening. So, thank you, Chandler Faith. We appreciate you being here tonight. And as the chairperson, I have appointed her the secretary for this particular evening. The next thing on the agenda, as we move right along, is Item G, which will be the presentations. As I'm, we're going to, we're going to hear two presentations tonight for our new city of Mulberry. The first one will be from Jerry Haynes, who was the chairperson of the governor's interim representatives. He was the chairperson for the transition team, and he is going to present tonight on the findings of the transition team and ultimately what their recommendations were. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. Thank you, Councilman. Before I get started on the recommendations, I'd like to first thank Governor Kemp for providing me the opportunity to sort of run the transition council. I will tell you, it was my first foray into at least a small part of public service. It was certainly eye-opening. I enjoyed every minute of it, and I enjoyed doing the little bit that we could do to get this city up and running as best as we could on day one. I'd also like to thank my fellow transition council members, Representative Derek McCollum, Senator Clint Dixon, Leader Chuck Ephestrahn, Mr. Chuck Warbington. It was a great team to work with. We partnered very well. There was some great discussion, and I enjoyed working with that team. I'll work with you anytime. Just feel free to ask. Just kidding. In addition to those who sat at the table with us, there were others who were involved behind the scenes. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank those. Our secretary, Ms. Kathy Towers Solis, who put together our agendas, took the minutes for us. Our attorney, Bill Riley, his associate attorney, Michelle Milkie, and then, our unsung hero. He likes to stay behind the scenes, but he does a tremendous job herding cats, Mr. Hero Sam West. Thank all of you for your help with the transition council. Councilman, as you mentioned, we spent a great deal of time going through the RFPs, and we believe we've set you up with a nice slate of vendors to work with to get the city up and running. I'd like to kind of go over at least my initial thoughts on what we discovered with these companies and why they were selected to represent and work with the city of Mulberry. For finance and administration, we recommend CKH. They're a very experienced firm, working with municipalities, and in my real job, I manage a level-two support team for an ERP system. So, for all of the finance and administration, anybody that's been in that field, they know how critical an ERP system is in running any organization. You have to be able to take care of your debits and credits. The one thing that stood out to me with CKH was, while the other firms stress the importance of us buying and implementing an ERP system as quickly as we could, CKH was the only firm to offer use of their internal ERP. This was tremendous to me, because you shouldn't tread lightly and move very quickly in determining an ERP system. There are a lot of features and functionalities, and if you don't select the right one and you don't take time to implement it correctly, you're going to be in bad shape. And anybody that knows, once you get finances in bad shape, it's hard to get them good. For IT services, InterDev. As I mentioned, I manage a level-two support team. Technology is my world. So, I asked a lot of questions for all of the IT firms that we represented. I will tell you, I was amazed at the services that InterDev provided, to the point at the end of it, I just kind of guessed, well, they've got to be out of the running. They have to be the highest bidder. They were not. They have a ton of services, including some really cool stuff with GIS that I think will serve the city very well. Additionally, they offered to own the city, to loan the city laptops. All of these firms, by the way, one of the things that we asked them was, what do you need to get started? We were looking for a firm that did not want to wait until we had a signed contract, because we can't sign a contract until January 1st. Every one of these firms that we recommend has agreed to start with just a letter of intent from the councilmen, saying that they will provide services for the city. So, that was very important for us. But in addition, most of them also offered to provide their own hardware for their employees to do the work on, to give the city time to go purchase equipment and get revenue to buy their equipment, including InterDev. Public Works, we recommend Lowe's Engineers. Their responses to their RFP, as well as their interview questions, to me demonstrated a high ability to not only provide services necessary, but to partner with the city. Their staff is extremely qualified. Many of them have been with the company for an extremely long time. I'm talking 20-plus years. This, to me, signaled a company that is good to work for, a company with low turnover, and a company that I felt could be very successful in working with the city. And then, finally, planning and development and permitting and inspections, we recommend CPL. You could tell by how they wrote their responses and then in their interview questions that planning and development was a big sweet spot for this company. They've done it for tons of municipalities. It felt to me like that that's kind of how their company started. And while the permitting inspections wasn't quite as robust, they answered every one of our questions and articulated their scope for how they can handle permitting inspections very well. Additionally, the committee felt like there could be a lot of synergies gained by having the same company provide both of these services. So, Councilman, those are the five, those are the four firms that we recommend you move forward with for the city of Mulberry. Regarding the banking RFP, we did get that submitted. We have five companies that have replied to the banking RFP. Unfortunately, based on timing, there really wasn't enough time for the transition council to review those, so we have handed those off to the councilmen, and they will finish that review process. But we do have five companies willing to provide services for the city. With that, I will say my goodbye. I will continue to do what I can for the city of Mulberry, but as my official role has ended, I appreciate everybody coming to the meetings, and it has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Haynes, and again, thank you to all the transition team. We appreciate all that hard work. Our next presenter is going to be Mr. Michael McPherson. Mr. McPherson is the, with the, with Member Services for the Georgia Municipal Association, and he's going to present tonight on the Georgia Municipal Association and their benefits for us as a new for us as a new city of Mulberry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you all for your part in making Mulberry a reality. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Haynes. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Representative. It is a special thing to be with you tonight at the very first council meeting, considering that that is what I do. I help cities, and I'm proud of it. So, I've got the wrong date, date on here. I was planning to be here last week. I just noticed that. But the Georgia Municipal Association is one of 49 municipal associations and leagues across the country that do various things for the cities within their states. And if you ask any of them to rank all 49 in the services that they provide, who's the best? You're looking at it right here. Georgia somehow ranks in the top five easy in number of services, number of employees, budget, everything, because we've had some of the best leadership for the past 50 years, and very proud to say that we're leading the pack across the country. This is a, this is a snapshot of our team. We are down by one person, but we have already hired to fill the slot. I am your Member Services Consultant for District Three, which is the metropolitan Atlanta area, the ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission footprint. Our districts are broken up along those lines of all the regional commissions around the state, and we work hand-in-hand with them, because they provide services to the local governments in those regions. My team has got special experience with cities. I came from the state legislature. I lobbied for Gwinnett County for five years before I joined the GMA team, where I oversaw revenue and finance, and then environmental policy and community development for years. Pete Krasinski is a former city manager. Tiffany Stanley, she is a HR professional. Emily Davenport has lots of, lots of experience in water, and she was also, I think, an assistant city manager. Sherry Bailey's a finance officer that turned into a city manager, and Pam Helton was a city clerk and has been with our team for a long time. She is our director. And that is our contact information and our cellphone numbers, that you can reach out to any one of us at any time. So, we were created in 1933. The, I guess, trajectory of municipal leagues and associations throughout the country began in the 1890s in Iowa, and they started to multiply as we began to realize the benefits of working together, to share those resources throughout the states and throughout the country. And so, it was actually the second attempt. We had an earlier attempt in the early 1900s before World War I, but that didn't stick. So, 1933, several of our larger city mayors got together, and they formed the Georgia Municipal Association. Represent all 536 cities in the state. Some of our sister or brother leagues do not. Some of them cannot get a hold of all of their cities, because they don't have the same number of staff. They don't have the same number of services. So, the core areas that we focus on are advocacy first. We are at the state capitol every day during the legislative session, and at just about every single study committee you can think of, because nearly every bill down there affects local governments in some way. And so, and so, we pay close attention to what's going on at the state and the federal level. Services, we provide direct services to you, which I will explain. And then, training and education is a massive component of what I do as a Member Services Consultant as far as training and education goes. Like I said, we, we advocate at both the state and the federal level how it works with GMA. There is a Legislative Policy Council, and there are policy committees. They're broken out into six different areas: community development, environment and natural resources, municipal government, public safety, revenue and finance, and transportation. Members from throughout the state make up the Legislative Policy Council, and they meet every Monday during the legislative session to discuss the bills that have been dropped the previous week, and the bills that we expect to come up in committee in the coming days. And they formulate strategy to either work for or against legislation that we feel is either beneficial or harmful to the quality of life services that cities provide. And so, you can access this. Anybody can go to our website at georgiacities.com and look at our legislative platform and our information, and that is, that is one of the ways that you can get there, through that link. We have our legislative alerts that go out to our members, our Gold Dome updates, which happen on Fridays, and also plenty of different legislative documents that you can, that you can get to as well on the website. Service. There's lots of different services that we provide, and they range from employee benefits, risk management, revenue opportunities, purchasing and finance, purchasing and financing, and operational efficiency. Employee benefits, we have defined benefits program and a defined contribution program. 293 members share over $3 billion in assets in our defined benefits program. So, we have a lot of, a lot of people in our hands that rely on us for these, for these programs. Life and health insurance covers the full swath there. And then, post-employment, post-employment benefits trust, the OPEB, that's for your retirement benefits. We also handle those as well. I can't see the writing up there. I'll have to look at my sheet. We have workers' compensation fund, property and liability insurance fund through, through GMA, which is our, our risk management group. Firefighters' cancer benefit fund, which is, satisfies the obligation from HB 146 a few years ago, that allows for the cities to provide insurance coverage for firefighters that need it. And then, the local government risk management services is also an aspect of our, of our benefit packages. And then, the next thing that is coming, it's already come online, but the mandate, I think, is January 1, is insurance for the PTSD for first responders. So, all the cities in the state have got to get coverage for their first responders, I believe, before January 1st to come into compliance. In the risk management area, like I said, there's the workers' comp insurance fund. We have the property and liability insurance program. And then, there's also lots of revenue opportunities. So, the Revenue Advantage Program covers helping cities make sure that their alcohol licenses are being observed correctly, and that their alcohol tax is being paid correctly. A lot of times, you have to, you have to make sure that you're getting what you're owed from, from folks that do these services in your community, as well as hotel motels. That's another area that they can help with. Your delinquent business license fee services, that's, that's another aspect of your membership. And then, Government Deals Online Service Auction is a way to make sure you're getting the most out of old equipment by selling it off. And you're getting on there to buy equipment that you need at a discount price. Purchasing and financing services. So, our Home Depot Government Solutions partnership is with Home Depot, and it is a, it's a service that gives you cash back for how much you spend. So, there's nothing, there's no, there's no upfront cost. You just enter the program, and you start shopping at Home Depot, and then at the end of the year, you get a rebate. The natural gas purchasing service is a, is a group rate purchase that you have to be along the, a certain pipeline in order to get it. I believe that's the AGL pipeline. Equipment and real estate financing programs, there's a, you can finance equipment and also purchase real property through our financing program, which lots of cities have taken part in, in the many years that that's been around. We use our partner VC3 for our cybersecurity and technology services, and they have a whole host and suite of different types of solutions for cities. Then, the telecommunications and right-of-way management service. We've found that our cable and telecommunications folks sometimes forget to pay cities what they're due from, from the fees and their right-of-way, and so, it's a good idea to, to get into that program, to make sure that the city is getting what it needs, as oftentimes, they like to dig up the stuff, and we end up having to come in and spend a lot to, to clean up after them. So, there's a good reason for that service. Training and education. So, an aspect of, of our keeping everybody connected is our communities that we've put together. If you, if you've been in, in a group setting online, it used to be listservs, massive email chains that were clunky and hard to deal with. We set up communities for each of the different types of individuals that cities have. So, we've got a mayor's community. We've got a city manager's community. We have a clerk's community. And we're going to set up several other communities based on specific need. And so, those, that ends up being a much better, better way to track different topics, and people really enjoy using those, because it's almost instant. When you have a question, hey, does anybody have an example of ordinance? Does anybody have an example of an SOP? Boom. Somebody responds, and it's right there at their fingertips. GMA's website is probably the very best one-stop shop for good government, I would say, in the United States, based on the clicks we get on our website. Our resources here are unmatched, and I'm not kidding. We get, we get more foreign traffic than we get local traffic, foreign by, outside of our state, not our nation. Dig deeper into our website. We've got all of the areas that we cover: advocacy, service, training and education, training opportunities that are coming up for elected officials. We've got our Cities United Summit, January 24th through 27th. That'll be in Atlanta at the Omni Hotel, where we'll have training for elected officials and supervisor staff. Newly-elected training will be held in March. Our Small Cities Conference will be held in May, and our annual convention that fills up the entire city of Savannah's hotels is in June. We also have other training opportunities. We have a municipal revenue administration certificate program for employees that handle municipal revenues. We have a human resources administrative, administration certificate program for your HR employees, customer service training, budget and financial management, city assessments, and council retreats, and then supervisory leadership. And those are all a lot of fun, working with those people that are providing services to, to the communities around the state. And then, your online resources. There's all kinds of publications on here. If you're interested in, in the newly-elected handbook, or the mayor and council handbook, you can get that right on our website. Handbook for Georgia Mayor and Council Members, the City Clerk's Handbook, the Handbook for Pension Committee Secretaries. There's all sorts of resources that are, that are up and ready to peruse. We've got lots of different programs that we've gotten into over the past several years. One of the things that, that undoubtedly y'all will experience is, it's hard to fill jobs, no matter what industry you're in. But here in the United States, my opinion that we don't do a good job at civic education. And so, therefore, the kids are not showing up to do the jobs that we need them to do, which is to be your city managers and your city clerks, your water pro two, your water pro one. And that is what we're trying to solve with that program right there. And hopefully, that you can spread the word. So, Jobs with Purpose. We've got recruitment, retention, paying benefits, planning partnerships, and Starts with Me campaign to explore the different avenues to make sure that we're doing all that we can as cities to provide what folks are looking for in, in healthy employment. The Embrace Program, the Engage Program with children and youth, are a couple of other programs that we've gotten into lately. Excellence, Excellence in Policing, and there's just, it just, the list goes on and on and on. You can really get lost in our website, and I am happy to be your guide. If you want to give me a call, that's my cellphone number. My email is there. Mr. Chairman, have you had enough?
I could always go more. You've got another 30 minutes if you want. No. Thank you, Mr. McPherson. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that GMA does. So, thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
Next up on the agenda is our action items. So, we're moving right along. We have four action items for this evening. The first action item is to elect an acting city clerk. As you heard from Chairman Haynes with the transition team, Ms. Kathy Solis was the acting clerk for the transition team. And so, we need to elect an acting clerk right now, just to help us do things like keep the minutes, collect bids or proposals from service providers. And so, at this point, I would like to personally, as the chairperson, recommend, based on what she's done for us so far, is Ms. Chandler Faith Pitts. What she's done, when she first volunteered to help out, we were like, sure, you know, we'd love to have you help out, and she has gone above and beyond. So, just let me, let me tell you a little bit about her. So, Chandler Faith is a mechanical engineering graduate from the Georgia Institute of Technology, Georgia Tech. She earned her degree in 2022. During her time at Georgia Tech, she gained valuable research experience in experimental design, data analysis, and project management. She was recognized with the President's Undergraduate Research Award for contributions to ongoing research. She also honed her leadership skills as the shop manager at the REC Racing, which was a student competition team, where she coordinated teams, managed resources, and ensured safety standards for her and her fellow students. Additionally, she volunteered as a K-2 operator at Free Chapel Church, and she has gained technical operations experience in her time there. Ms. Pitts has graciously, like I said, agreed to be our acting secretary this night, but I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Chandler Faith Pitts, the acting clerk for the city of Mulberry. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any comment from any of the council?
I'd just like to tell her thank you very much for the work that you've put in so far, and thank you for helping us with tonight's meeting.
Any other comments? Okay, then we'll go ahead and call a vote. All in favor, if you could raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Okay, the vote is unanimous, that Ms. Chandler Faith Pitts will be the new acting clerk for the city of Mulberry. There's two additional, the two next items on our agenda are, the first is the ratification of the actions taken by the transition team, by the Governor's interim representatives. And then, also, you heard from Chairperson, Chairman Haynes, that the, many of the service providers have agreed to go ahead and start services with letters of intent. Now, I have copies of that here, and I do have another question for, for Mr. Riley. Obviously, I notice on these copies, the signature line says that it's supposed to be signed by the mayor. Can we, can you give me a recommendation? Are we authorized to do that? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riley. So, according to Mr. Riley, for those who couldn't hear him in the back, his recommendation is because this ratification and these letters of intent do have a signature line here for the acting mayor, that we go ahead and table those items until our first regular meeting. Remember, at our first regular meeting, we can elect an interim mayor, and so, we will table those two items, or I will make a motion to table those two items, both the ratification of the actions of the transition team, as well as adopting those letters of intent for the recommended service delivery providers. So, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll call a vote. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll call a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the vote's unanimous. We're going to table those two items until our first regular meeting. The last item, which again is one of the primary reasons we're here, Agenda Item HD, is to adopt our regular meeting schedule. I have a copy of a regular meeting schedule here that I propose. So I propose that we have our first regular meeting on Tuesday, December 3, at, here at Hamilton Mill United Methodist Church, same time, 6:30. And then we meet every Tuesday after that for December 10, December 17. And then I do not recommend we meet on Christmas Eve, because I do not think my wife would appreciate that. So I suggest for, we, we take the week off for Christmas, and then instead of meeting on New Year's Eve, we come and meet on Monday, December 30. So our regular meeting schedule for 2024, what remains of 2024, would be, I propose, December 3, December 10, December 17, and then December 30, at the same time, 6:30, here at Hamilton Mill United Methodist Church. Does do, would anyone like to make a motion on that issue?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I'll make a motion that we accept the regular meeting schedule as presented, to meet Tuesday, December 3, Tuesday, December 10, Tuesday, December 17, Monday, December 30, all at 6:30 here at Hamilton Mill United Methodist Church.
Okay, do I have a second?
You've got a second here.
Okay, and is there any additional discussion on these dates? No? Okay, then we'll call a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the regular meeting schedule is adopted unanimously. The regular meeting schedule will be held December 3. So our first regular scheduled meeting will be December 3 of this year at 6:30. It will be the two following Tuesdays, December 10 and December 17. And then we will have a, our final meeting of this year, 2024, on December 30, 2024. The, the next item up on the, on the agenda, as you can see there, is what I had mentioned before, is that Executive Session. And just to, to update everyone, so what's going to happen with Executive Session is, we are going, like I said, to discuss litigation. So we're going to step back and discuss litigation and the pending litigation. That will be done, be done just with the council and with our attorneys, who will be present to discuss that with us. Now, you are more than welcome to stick around and, and sit and wait for us to come back. What's going to end up happening is we will talk to the attorneys for as long as it takes. I don't really know how long it's going to be. Then we will return in here. If there's any items that we have to adopt from that Executive Session, what will happen is we will take those items up. We will just say, do we adopt those items? Then we will make a motion to adjourn. So you are more than welcome to sit and wait for us to come back. There's probably not going to be any more real action as far as what's going to be done, but I just wanted to go ahead and give you that notice in case anybody wants to get home and, and go ahead and leave. So we're going to go ahead at this point. The council's going to retreat back into Executive Session with the attorneys, and then we will return once we're completed. And for those of you that are going to go ahead and leave, first off, let me thank you for coming. I really appreciate. We had a great turnout for our first meeting, and I'm very excited to start this new city. All right, we, we need a motion to, yeah, thank you. So we need a motion to retreat into Executive Session.
I make a motion to go into Executive Session.
Okay, I second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is that for the purpose of litigation?
For the purpose, I make a motion to retreat into Executive Session for the purpose of litigation.
That's why he's the best in the business, right there. And then, and then I second to retreat into Executive Session for purposes of litigation. Is there any discussion with the council? Okay, at this time, we'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay, the, we will retreat unanimously. The vote is unanimous into Executive Session, Executive Session at this time. Thank you for coming.